Good evening. I am Rebecca Hawthorne, President of the League of Women Voters of the Wayzata Plymouth Area. And I would like to welcome our candidates, our audience, and our viewers on behalf of our hosts, the League of Women Voters of the Wayzata Plymouth Area. The League of Women Voters is a 103-year-old volunteer, nonpartisan organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government. We work to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and we influence public policy through education and advocacy. The League does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. It is our purpose in sponsoring forums such as these to provide you, the public, with the opportunity to hear candidates discuss face-to-face the issues that are important to you. This is a nonpartisan forum. We ask that campaign buttons and campaign T-shirts not be worn, or signs or literature be distributed in this room. At this point, please silence your electronic devices. And now, I would like to introduce this evening's moderator, Bill Johnson, a member of the League of Women Voters of the Wayzata Plymouth Area.
Good evening. Tonight's forum is provided to give you the opportunity to learn about the candidates running for Mound Mayor and City Council. There's never enough time to cover all of the issues in a setting such as this. If your questions were not addressed, feel free to contact the candidates directly. The Legal Women Voters post complete, unedited recordings of the forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. The rules for this evening's forum are as follows. Candidates will be allowed an opening statement with a maximum of one minute to state their experience, platform, and objectives. A question-and-answer period will follow the opening statements. The answers will be confined to one minute unless designated otherwise. Opening statements will be given in alphabetical order by office being sought, and questions will be answered in a rotating order. A 15-second warning will be given to each candidate. The candidates will also be given a two-minute closing statement. Candidates, please finish your sentence quickly when you see the stop sign, or you will be interrupted. No references of a personal nature will be tolerated. A person's public record may be examined, but not their character. This forum is made available to encourage the voting public to focus on the issues and not on personalities. We ask that there be no demonstrations in support or opposition to the candidates or their positions, and that the candidates be allowed their full time to get their points The public has been encouraged to submit questions online in advance. For those in the audience, if you have a question, write it on a three-by-five card available from our volunteers, and raise your hand, and they will pick it up. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. Those that fall into the same general area may be consolidated. The candidates running for Mound Mayor are Kim Believernick, Jason Holt, and Ray Salazar. The candidates running for two seats on the Mound City Council are Michelle Herrick, Kathy McInaney, Sherri Pugh, and Michael Tesmer. All candidates were invited to participate in the forum tonight. City Council candidate Kathy McInaney declined to attend. As stated in our candidate participation policy, we will proceed with the mayoral candidates, Kim Believernick, Jason Holt, and Ray Salazar, and with City Council candidates, Michelle Herrick, Sherri Pugh, and Michael Tesmer. We will now begin with candidates for mayor to give their opening remarks, beginning with Kim Believernick.
Well, thank you, League of Women Voters, for sponsoring this event tonight. I've lived in Mound for 37 years with my husband Barry. My passion for this community and the people that I call my neighbors, along with my business acumen, makes me ideally qualified as mayor of Mound. One of my favorite presidents, John F. Kennedy, said, "One person can make a difference, and everyone should try." I will lead with integrity, work with citizens to define and agree upon our common economic and community goals. We need to establish a climate of trust and openness and mutual respect for all citizens and our council members. I'm going to foster a healthy, robust, and strong sense of community in Mound. I'll be the people's mayor, who will clearly communicate the plans to transform Mound to its full potential. I just don't seek this office. I seek to make a positive change in Mound.
Thank you. Next, Jason Holt.
Hey, my name is Jason Holt. I want to be your next mayor of Mound. I moved to Mound six years ago. We found that we liked the small-town feel that Mound provides, loved the lakes, West Tonka School District, where both my kids attend, one of them out there in the audience there, as well as my lovely wife of 17 years. I'm a financial advisor. I've been a financial advisor as well, 17 years. And with, when I work with my clients, I see situations where we got to plan for short-term and long-term goals. The city is no different. We got to make sure that we're on budget to plan for long-term and short-term. I'm also on the planning committee, and I'm running out of time here, so I'll continue later.
All right. Thank you. Ray Salazar.
Good evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters. I'm Ray Salazar, your mayor. I've served as your mayor for the past four years. Prior to that, I served as your city councilman for 10 years. I am a small-business owner. I own two Subway restaurants. I've lived in Mound for 30 years. I'm married to my wife Debbie, 28 years, and we have a 16-year-old daughter. Some of my accomplishments include, I've addressed the city budget through cost-sharing and created a 2% levy over the past 12 years. I've developed a long-term financial plan for our city and creating reserves so as to preclude heavy assessments for street reconstruction. I've prevented the Commerce Shopping Center from being developed into apartments, and now it is fully leased, and new tenants are moving in, in fact, a new restaurant.
All right. Thank you. Now, we'll hear from the candidates for City Council, beginning with Michelle Herrick.
Good evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this. My name is Michelle Herrick, and I have lived in Minnesota since 1998, and I've moved to Mound in the year of 2005. I have enjoyed the small-town feel, and I would hope that we could keep it that way. Currently, my role is a senior project manager in the financial industry. I think affords me a lot of knowledge and information working with regulatory issues and other types of problems and issues that we have to resolve in a very quick manner. So I think that would lend itself well to serving as a city council member. I have three things that I would like to work on: creative ideas to benefit the community, communication plan, and an economic development committee. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Sherri Pugh.
Good evening. Can you, is this good enough? Okay. Good evening. I'm Sherri Pugh, and I'm a current city council member. And I want to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity this evening. My family moved here, I heard someone in the audience say they remembered when we moved here in 1966. So, I've seen this town, this was a small village at the time, grow, and I've seen it change, and it prosper, and I've seen it not prosper. But during that time of my growing up here and during my younger adult life, I worked in many places. I worked in the city of Minneapolis, I worked in Ohio, California, Mississippi, actually even Louisiana and Arkansas. So I've seen a lot of community development, which is where my work is focused, on building communities, building economic development, building housing, helping the community become whole and prosperous, and build wealth. And I think that that's still the case in Mound. We're a small town, but we have so much more to still grow. We're not buildable, I mean, we don't have much more buildable size, but...
All right.
Okay. I'm sorry, I couldn't see.
Thank you. Your voice is a little soft, so if you could move your mic a little closer. And now, we'll hear from Michael Tesmer.
Good evening, and thank you. I'm the new guy in town. I've only been here for a little over a year. I was here for about a month, and I learned about the water, stained a bunch of clothes, couldn't drink it a couple months later. So, really got me motivated to start participating in the city council, learn a little bit about the city. Always known I was going to be in politics, I just didn't know when it was going to start. So, just a little bit about me. I'm a dad, I'm a husband, I'm a veteran, I'm a college grad, and currently, I'm an IT executive, 30 years' experience, working in corporate America. I deal with corporate politics every day. I manage a billion-dollar budget. I have 2,700 people on my team, and I'm responsible for 10,000 applications and the availability. So I think that background gives me some experience and some diverse thinking that I haven't seen in the council lately. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, I'll start the questions, and you will be answering in a rotating order. You have one minute. First question, and if you need me to repeat these at any point, let me know. First question, what is your top priority for Mound as the mayor or a city council member, and how would you address it? And that question goes first to Michelle Herrick.
Thank you, Bill. I think one of the top priorities in the city of Mound is to establish a long-term financial plan. And as some of the other candidates have mentioned, there's some concern around various issues such as the water quality, housing availability, and a lot of infrastructure issues that we need to address. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Michael Tesmer.
I already gave you some insight on the water. I'll share a little bit more. I have a two-year-old son, and I was filling his bottles with our tap water when I got the message that we had manganese, and I was petrified. I thought I might have poisoned my son. The manganese in the water actually causes nerve damage to young kids and elderly. So, it's a big issue. I've heard what we've done in the city, what we've attempted to do. I think people are working hard, we just didn't get it done. And so, I feel like I live in a first-world community, and I got third-world water, which is unacceptable. I'm going to focus as hard as I can on trying to fix it.
All right. Thank you. Sherri Pugh.
Okay. So, for me, the number-one issue in our community is the water. It was, when it was identified as a council, we immediately took action to have research done so we could understand the impact on it, to identify what were the options to address it. We picked a plan that's an expensive plan, but it's one that will take care of the issue in getting us the proper filtration systems installed. But the hard part is raising the money for it. And I know that I constantly, because I've spent my life looking for grant monies, I'm looking constantly for monies to help us achieve that goal. But even when we achieve the goal of raising the money, it's still going to take us years to get that water system installed and developed. So, that's a solution, but it's not immediate. And so, what we have to be thinking about is, what are the things we're going to do to help all of our families be safe with the water that we have now? And we've got to be more proactive on that case.
Thank you. All right. Jason Holt.
Absolutely. The number-one issue is water. I go door-to-door talking to people, exactly that's the number-one issue, 100%, hands down. First of all, part of the reason why I got in, actually, Michael, a couple years ago, is because, first of all, our quality was not the best. I'd filled up my kid's bathtub, and it was not great-looking. That's one thing. The second thing is, I couldn't believe the price. It was, we came from St. Michael, and I think it was either two or three times what we were paying up there. It was insane. So, the problem is, and I have all the numbers, but we don't have a lot of money. You know, we're actually in a negative situation with our water budget. So, we are working on a plan. We have a $24 million bill. It did not go through bonding this year, so it did not get passed. We're working with our elected officials above us that can kind of help us on the state side. We're hoping next year that that's going to take place, and we're going to get the money.
Thank you. Ray Salazar.
Thank you. First item, water quality. You've heard that already many times tonight. We, earlier in '21, we were made aware of manganese levels, elevated manganese levels in our water, and I was immediately on it with our staff. We came up with a plan. We presented the plan to staff, or rather, to our city council. It came to $24 million. From there, we took it, I took it to our congressman, Dean Phillips, to try to get some money there through the infrastructure bill. He brought $680 million to the state of Minnesota. Then I took it to our state representative and our state senator. It made all the way through to the Senate floor. They ran out of time, so it wasn't seen. I'm working on it this year to try to continue with that and get the money. The next item is infrastructure. We have 30 lift stations that need, 24 of them have been replaced. We have six more to do. They cost $600,000, or $400,000 apiece. And finally, redevelopment. We have a great plan. Thank you.
All right. Kim Believernick.
Agreed. Water's our biggest problem. But let me tell you what I'm going to say is a little bit different than the rest of the participants have said. I think we need to rally our citizens. We have a bill at the state, but they need to know how important this is to us. And we need to get on a bus and go down to the state and rally, rally and talk about this need, express how important this is to our citizens. We cannot live with manganese. It's going to take four years to fix those wells once we get the money. And some people cannot afford to pay for bottled water or a filter in their home, and we need to have a contingency plan to help those people, provide them with water. I've met with Wecan, I've met with the Food Shelf, I've met with the, with the Brian Borg here, the...
All right. Thank you. All right. This next question also deals with water. There's concern about lake water quality and stormwater runoff. How do you propose dealing with and funding this issue? Beginning with Jason Holt.
Well, this is a timely question. We just talked about this last night at our council meeting. If some of us are a little tired up here, we were, it was a late night. I think we got out of there 11-ish. We came up with a, one of our council members is going to be on a somewhat of a committee to deal with our city staff, as well as our kind of water engineers. And then, today, we just got an email from one of our residents that would like to join that as well. This is the problem over on Harrison's. It's coming downhill this way, downhill this way, and downhill this way, and it's all flooding right into their kind of lagoon. It's going into Lake Minnetonka. We want to make sure that we have good water for our residents, as well as, we got to be careful what we're putting into the water. It's all, everything we do on the street level goes eventually into the water, so we want to make sure we're doing that. At the same point, we also got to figure out funding and, you know, how we're going to do that big term, so...
All right. Kim Believernick.
I'm on the Parks and Open Spaces Commission, and I was an active participant at the Overland Lane Harrison's Bay Rain Garden. And there's a group of citizens that are taking action, taking it in their own hands, building these rain gardens. I visited it today with my husband, and it's a beautiful representation of how we can do some actions today before we get the funding, before we get all of the positions in place to help the runoff. We can take action as citizens, and I was part of that team, and I'm proud of the action that we took.
Thank you. Michelle Herrick.
So, as someone else mentioned, we were up late last night discussing this at the city council meeting. I have to agree with some of the discussion topics that were made. This is a huge issue. It's very costly for the residents. They're paying tax dollars that are elevated because they are on the lake. So, I think, first of all, we need to fix the problem, find out where this silt and some of the chemicals that are getting into the lake are coming through that drainage system. It was discussed that, I guess, some of the equipment that we've installed isn't actually performing to our expectations. So I think first, fix the problem, and then work towards coming up with some sort of funding, either through, I know that a grant was mentioned last night. There are various options and resources available to us, such as the Minnehaha Watershed District. So there's a lot of things we can still do.
Thank you. Sherri Pugh.
You know, to solve a lot of problems in our community, we have to do collaborative work. And that means we have to bring the county, the city, Minnetrista, Mound, because we are bordering cities, and Hennepin County, and our city, and our other government entities together, to see what their role is in that. But you know, we're also citizens who say that we love this city we live in, we love living on the lake, and we have a responsibility to be good stewards of this lake, create our own water, rainwater gardens in our yards, both those who live on the lake, as well as those of us who don't, so we can retain some of this on our own properties. So I think it's a shared responsibility, but we all have to come together collaboratively to work together to resolve it.
Thank you. Michael Tesmer.
I would plus-one what Sherri just said. My, in my career, when I listened to the city council last night, I didn't hear some of the right questions, I didn't see some of the right direction, and at the end of the day, I know we were up late, I think we could have gotten there quicker. And I say this because I don't feel that everyone is involved at the level that they need to be before the meeting, getting prepped, and at the meeting, participating, and asking the right questions. So there's a lot of time spent rehashing the same thing over and over. Where I think I could have helped last night is, in my corporate life and in my personal life, I have brought people together on very complex problems. And I think last night, as Sherri noted, this is one of these situations where you have five entities involved. It's not one, it's not the citizens, it's not Mound, it's not Minnetrista, it's not Hennepin. It's all of us need to come together and come with a solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray Salazar.
Thank you. Yes, we had a long meeting last night. We were not anticipating that many questions with regards to this issue, and that is the infiltration of silt and whatever getting into the lake and making a mess out of a certain bay and also a lagoon. I determined at that time that there are four governmental agencies involved. There's Minnetrista, Minnehaha Creek Watershed District, Hennepin County, the city of Mound, and then finally, also the citizens that live in that community. And what we determined was that we're going to give it to staff, give it to our engineers, come up with some sort of a solution, some sort of an idea, and then bring it back. This will obviously go into a workshop where we need to spend a little more time on this and really drill down and get all of the right information so that we can kind of help and guide with this.
All right. Thank you. We now move from water to fire. The Mound Fire Department receives calls to assist from surrounding communities and does not receive compensation. What solution do you propose? Ray Salazar.
Would you repeat that? I could barely...
Yeah, I'm sorry. The Mound Fire Department receives calls to assist from surrounding communities and does not receive compensation. What solution do you propose?
That is actually on more on a state level. We, it's called mutual aid, and because we have probably one of the finest, if not the finest, fire department here in Mound, we have a tremendous amount of esprit de corps. We have a full complement of firefighters, and unfortunately, some of the surrounding cities don't have that. So, when they have an alarm, quite often, we also are called at the same time because they don't have enough people. Simply, those other cities don't have enough people. This is something that we cannot bill for. We give help, free of charge, and if, in the advent that we need help, we get help. So it's not something that we can charge for, like I just said. This is something that goes to a higher level and actually goes to the state level, and this is part of the state legislature.
All right. Thank you. Sherri Pugh.
Well, Ray has stated the problem correctly, but you know, sometimes you have to change systems. And clearly, the way this is established now is not correct. And the cities that are not, that are not paying for this fire service are some of our more wealthier cities. So I'm just going to call it out for what it is. And so, when a wealthier community cannot, they could contract with us for the service, but they chose not to contract with us, and so therefore, put themselves in vulnerability. So maybe we should go to the local residents of that community and say, "Do you really want to put yourself in this vulnerability of not having a responsive fire department and relying on us to always do our mutual aid benefit?" Now, our fire department is wonderful, and they've done great service for these other communities. And so, I would never put down our fire department. They're the best, and everyone else should want them, but they need to be paying for them, and they need to stand up and take on their responsibilities.
All right. Thank you. Jason Holt.
So, here's the problem. We're using all of our equipment, brand-new, great equipment, and we're the first to show up, and other places show up, "Oh, the fire's already out." Great, thank you. We use all of our money, all your money, to do that. This was called out in one of our council meetings a little bit early this spring, I think. The problem that we have, though, is that we never follow up on things. So as mayor, I want to make sure that we are getting compensated, if there's a reason, just like Sherri was saying. Let's follow the chain up, and let's make sure that we're going to get paid. I want to make sure that we're helping out other communities as well, but we can't do it on our own. We can't even afford our own water.
Thank you. All right. Michael Tesmer.
I'm not intimately familiar with this challenge, so just sitting here, thinking about it for a couple seconds. It seems to me that, obviously, if we're providing a service, we need to get compensated because we're not a wealthy community. So compensation can come in the form of many things, not always just dollars. So I don't know the swap that happens between the cities, but obviously, if we're providing services to them, there needs to be a conversation, multiple conversations, and escalation, probably with their citizens, just notification about their lack of ability to support this. I also don't know the legality, so I'm not going to comment on when we should stop providing the service.
All right. Thank you. Kim Believernick.
Well, I think it all starts with leadership from the mayor, is that this is an important issue. It's on the minds of the citizens, and we need to be collaborative with our neighborhoods, with other cities that are close by, and determine what's the best solution. If we're the best fire department, do you want to partner with us? To partner with us means that there's a responsibility behind that, whether that be financial or some other way of benefiting Mound. But to not deal with a subject that's been brought up numerous times, I've gone to every council meeting since this last April, and I've heard this subject more than once. Yeah. And I haven't heard of any solutions or any movement forward with it. It takes a strong mayor.
Thank you. Michelle Herrick.
As Mike said, I'm not intimately involved in the facts, so one thing that I would say, I understand regulations quite clearly, and if there is a mutual aid benefit requirement, I would think that there would be some sort of recourse, or we should have some sort of ability to negotiate those services with the surrounding communities if they're not providing their part of the deal, such as reciprocation of benefit.
All right. Thank you. This next question will go first to Michelle Herrick. We'll shift gears here. The city council previously denied the rezoning request for the Northland Project at Commerce and Shoreline. What is your vision for the revitalization of that part of downtown Mound?
Well, I'm actually very intimately informed on this issue, and many of you may recognize me, but I've been to several city council meetings...
And many of you may recognize me, but I've been to several city council meetings and working with various community organizations and people within the community to deal with this particular situation, Northland, which was a plan to build a large apartment complex on the shores of Lake Minnetonka. I mean, excuse me, of Lake Langdon. The DNR was strongly against this. They wrote three letters. And there were several requests for variances that were being made. This is also an area of town that is part of our 2040 plan to be developed. There were several issues with it, such as the main road coming down the middle of the property was deeded access to citizens of Linwood Boulevard, preventing the building of this large apartment building.
All right. Thank you. Ray Salazar.
Thank you. The project at hand was eighty-some units of apartments and simply put, was not in the best interest for the city. It was too big. The ingress and egress was very difficult. There was a vacation of right-of-way that was not going to be suitable. It was not in all fairness to the residents on Linwood, which are part of a housing development dating back to some 1909 or 1918, that have an easement to that lake. It was just bottom line, it was too big and too cumbersome. And there was, anyway, it was decided against not to do it. Thank you. That's it.
All right. Michael Tesmer.
So, when I heard about the project and I heard it got shot down, I was elated. I didn't want to move into my community and see another apartment building going up. I drive from here to Eden Prairie for work every day. And I feel like we've littered the countryside with buildings. And it's prosperity for very wealthy people who are invested in housing right now. And this felt like another one of those projects. Around the asset, you know, the assets associated, what are we going to do to land? You know, my question would be, do we need to do anything right now, anyway? You know, again, we have a shortage of 24 to 26 million dollars on this water project. So, why don't we put this one on the back burner and focus on what we need to? Get the resources focused on figuring out how to partner with the right people to get the grants we're looking for, figure out how to raise the money and put this thing on the back burner.
All right. Thank you. Kim Believernick.
Well, I agree that we need to prioritize what we're focusing our attention on. And there's multiple projects that we can work on as a community every meeting. And this particular one took up a tremendous amount of time. Time, effort, attention of our council. And I believe that if this was not a project that the council was behind, if the mayor wasn't behind, that should have been stated long before we got into all these meetings and rallied the citizens. There were, I was at those meetings where citizen after citizen stood up and shared the message that they didn't want this. And it was over and over again.
All right. Thank you. Jason Holt.
So, this, we first got, I guess, our first email back in December of '21, saying that this is going to be coming. It showed up in January. We just voted it down last Tuesday or the Tuesday before that. I'm glad it failed. I voted against it, actually, the last, how many times? A couple of times. It was always too big. The problem I have, again, with this is that we wasted nine months of our time. We wasted nine months of our staff's time, our planning commission, our residents. It's a buzz. It's out there. Complete waste of time. If I was on the development committee, which I'm not, then I would have said, here's a deal. A hundred unit is not going to pass in this town, nor is an eighty unit. You want to bring a thirty unit or something? Let's talk. But we need leadership on the beginning part and not waste nine months of our city staff.
All right. Thank you. Sherry Pugh.
On this development process, I consistently have said that I feel that the big flaw is in the process in which the city takes in a development. There is a committee of two that meets with the developer, talks about the project and gives some level of input. That is, because it's only two council people involved, it is not an open meeting. And then the developer proceeds on their own decision after that to bring it before the planning commission and then to the city. I had proposed at a work session and still believe that our process should mimic more that of what other cities do. And that is when a developer is coming with a proposal, they do a concept presentation to the community as a whole to get feedback before they move to the next level. I think some of our development problems can be resolved by doing a different process.
All right. Thank you. This next question will go first to Mr. Tesmer. There's been public concern about the safety around the Dakota Trail crossing for years. And it says, which is increased if the Northland project were to go through, which apparently it didn't. What action, if any, would you support to deal with this public safety concern around the Dakota Trail crossing? Michael Tesmer.
I'd start with getting more signage and painting the road. And I can't, I personally have almost hit two or three people this summer alone. I don't understand why we don't have it marked better. I don't understand why it isn't currently painted as a crossing. It seems like the crossing is a hundred yards down the road. Those are questions I have as a citizen. What I would do is I'd figure out exactly why we're almost killing people instead of putting up the right signage. I don't know if it's too close to the intersection. The other one is there's a blind corner. The trail comes to ahead on a corner where I see people run out and almost get hit. So, obviously, we need to address that. We're going to kill somebody if we don't.
Thank you. Sherry Pugh.
Well, we are taking action on that trail, but you're right. And one of our challenges is that Shoreline and Commerce are not city roads. They're roads that are owned by the county. So, once again, collaboration with the county, with Three Rivers, the trail system and the city. We have to bring those three entities together. But we have come up with a solution, which there will be new signage, there'll be new road markings. Unfortunately, it's not coming fast enough, but that will happen very soon as the county gets ready to do work on Shoreline.
All right. Thank you. Kim Believernick.
If you go onto the Mound website, there's a study that was delivered to the Mound City Council in 2021. That stated that we should put, it was the number one priority, is to put overhead flashing lights in an oasis in the middle of the road. Now, that study was done and Mound paid for it, even though it's a county road because there was concern back then. But again, no action was taken. There's also a problem at Commerce and the Dakota Trail and how people cross the road right by the restaurant. And so, there's more than one spot within Mound that I'm concerned about. And if I was mayor, it would again become a priority.
All right. Thank you. Ray Salazar.
Well, that report we paid for and we, as a council, decided to design, redesign County Road 15 for Hennepin County. There are three particular government agencies involved, Hennepin County, Three Rivers Park District and the city of Mound. We took it on to our own. It cost us $9,000 to put the report together. That is, to have our engineers do so. We presented it to Hennepin County. We just recently, two months ago, got the approval from Hennepin County. It's going to be shared three ways, Hennepin County, Three Rivers Park District and the city of Mound. It's going to cost in excess of $200,000. There will be an RRFB, which is a flashing light, and crosswalks. And we will share it equally, a third, a third and a third. It should be done by spring of '23.
All right. Thank you. Michelle Herrick.
Yeah, I guess I'm kind of lucky to come up last here. Most of what has been said is something that I would have contributed to the conversation, which was, I know the analysis has been done. I know it's in the works. It does take time, especially when you're collaborating with multiple public entities. So, I think that's one that's already been addressed and is in progress, so.
All right. Thank you. Jason Holt.
So, when I ran two years ago to join council, this is the first thing I ever thought of. I mean, my daughter right up there, who's now 10, she was, what, eight at the time? And she's like, Dad, I don't want to cross this crosswalk to go to the drive-in. I mean, I'd have to run her bike across. Now, I rollerblade, I run, I bike, I do all the things across there. That was my number one priority of getting up here. He is right. We do have a plan. That's good. We're getting there. My problem is the slow pace of government. It's insanely slow. We just had our county commissioner come before our council a couple of weeks ago. And he said in his slide that it wouldn't be 2023, it'd be now 2024. And I lost my stuff. Until it's done, it's not done, but we do have a plan. I'm glad that we're going the right way. We just need to get this thing done. I want to see it.
All right. Apparently, continuing with safety concerns. There are safety concerns regarding the mid-block intersection at Tuxedo Boulevard and Brighton. What ideas would you support for making this intersection safer for pedestrians, beginning with Kim Believernick?
Well, I think we need to look at all of our roads to make them pedestrian friendly. I think that's part of economic development, is that people want to move here, people want to shop here, people want to participate in our environment, that they want to go up and down our streets. I'm not familiar with that specific crossroad, but I do believe that it's time that we see this city as one that people want to shop in and that they want to walk in and they want to participate in.
Thank you. Jason Holt.
We just passed this the other day. We were putting a three-way stop sign at Brighton and Tuxedo. One of my buddies, who's on my Thursday night basketball group, that's actually one of the first things he told me when we were running last time. He said, hey, my kids and I, we want to walk across the road. And yet, it's going to be a problem because there's no stop sign. I mean, I just was over there today and you just go straight through. We do have the poles up. We don't have the stop sign on there yet. Takes time. We got to let the cement settle. And then we are going to do a painted crosswalk. So, that is, should be mission complete on that. Hopefully, that works and everybody's happy with that.
All right. Thank you. Ray Salazar.
That idea, three-way stop sign, was brought up by Mr. Velsor, who is a member of our city council. He lives in the neighborhood. He brought it to our attention. We gave it to our engineers, Mr. Brian Simmons from Bolton and Mank. He came up with a plan. He came up with a cost, presented it to the city council. It was approved. We're just waiting for the installation. That's it. It's done.
Thank you.
Safe.
Thank you. Michelle Herrick.
Once again, it sounds like the problem has been resolved. One thing that I would say about this situation and many others that have occurred at city council is that we don't do a really good job of communicating to our community and our citizens to keep them informed and keep them updated on what's going on in the city and what kind of issues and problems that the city council is tackling. On a, you know, rapid basis, it tends to be very stagnant. We're currently, I know they've had some discussions. It's currently a quarterly newsletter. I would like to see us leverage technology and communications a little bit more effectively. And basically, create a, you know, newsletter that is available both in the mail format and on the internet in some format.
Thank you. Sherry Pugh.
I think Michelle was bringing up a good point here. And that is that as council, we, now granted, we've been sort of quarantined for the last two and a half years. But we need to, and it is our responsibility, to be out in the community, meeting with residents, talking to folks and finding out what the issues are. Because I know that there are probably many other places where crosswalks are needed or stop signs. And we don't know that if it's not in our immediate neighborhood. But we should be taking that responsibility. One of the things I love about being on the park board is, once a year, the park board members go to all the parks and we write up little reports about the conditions of the parks. And so, when you're there, you get to talk to people about the park. Maybe we need to use the park board to help us get more input, but we need to hear from you all. And we need to reach out to all of you to hear what are the issues that are going on in your neighborhood that we need to be addressing.
Thank you. Michael Tesmer.
So, it sounds like this issue's been addressed. You know, a couple of thoughts on it. We were talking about the apartment building being built and you look at the plan for the city. I just want to, as a citizen here and somebody that's running to represent everybody, the strategy of where we're going with this town, I think, is in question. You know, how do we generate? I mean, we know we're not the wealthiest community that's out there. We pay our bills. We have a lot of great things about this town. But how do we increase the revenues without raising taxes? How do we make Mound a destination? Part of that is the plan. Part of that is managing, you know, the intersections and these crosswalks. It's interesting when other people in other towns know about a crosswalk that's inadequate or an intersection that doesn't work for them and they avoid it. And my whole thing is we need to take a look at what we are as a community and try to figure out how to address these simple things like this. I'd really like to understand personally better why it takes so long to get things done.
All right. Thank you. Now, we can move to death to taxes. Mound tax revenues come primarily from residential owners. Given the rising city operating and infrastructure costs, what action do you support to cover these rising costs? Michael Tesmer.
So, I'll be honest, as far as the revenues and how they get generated for the city is something I'm learning. This is my first time running for any office. I'll give you my background again. I manage, I was a CFO of a $9 billion business. I'm pretty familiar with money and how it moves. I'd love to learn more about the city and the plan so we can figure out how do we create, like I said, the destination and not just tax the people that are here, but keep the community of Mound feeling like the community of Mound.
All right. Thank you. Sherry Pugh.
Well, I've stated many times that one of our challenges is that less than about 2% of our tax base is from commercial development, meaning that the rest of it's all coming from residential. 75% of the tax base comes from almost all of the lakeshore owners in the city and then the rest of the town, which represents 75% of the houses, but only 24% of the tax base. So, you can see our formula is kind of mixed up. It's not the best proportionate representation or diversification of sources. So, how do we deal with that? We don't have a lot to do in many respects, but we can try and generate more businesses. But if we generate more businesses, we may need more people. And how do you put more people when there isn't land to build housing for more people? So, we do have a quandary before us in how we create extra value taxes to cover the cost. And we are a city that is expensive. We have a lot of pump stations. We have, what is it, 47 miles of shoreline?
Sorry to have to cut you off. All right. Michelle Herrick.
As part of my platform and with speaking with a lot of people in the community, there is a strong desire to establish more businesses that provide both services and, you know, shopping type things. I think it's a crucial thing. I know during the Schaefer Richardson project, it was brought up that we wanted to maintain that commercial real estate in downtown. In order to do that, we have to help sustain those businesses. So, part of it is communication to the community about support, but it's also about creating an economic development committee that can come up with a strategic plan to bring in new businesses and support our existing businesses. I know it was discussed during the Schaefer Richardson project, but I don't believe it's ever really come to fruition. So, I would like to see that developed out and a little bit more strategic planning around developing our city's business structure.
All right. Thank you. Ray Salazar.
Redevelopment. That's the answer. Specifically, the Commerce Shopping Center in 2020, we were in this same room. They wanted to convert it to apartments. I spearheaded the charge not to turn it into a apartment. I spearheaded the charge not to turn it into apartments, but to keep it as a shopping center. A few short months later, it sold at auction. Mr. Ryami now owns it, and he has redone the entire shopping center, new roof, new windows, new air conditioning, new heating, new tenants. He is now fully leased, in that that he has a new shopping, or excuse me, a new restaurant. It'll be a full-service restaurant, moving in probably this next winter or early spring. Besides that, our Harbor District, Artesa is a new building project there, where we have 52 units of senior co-op. That's going to bring in new lifeblood. We also have some new townhomes at the villages of Island Park, and we also have new town-
Thank you. Jason Holt.
So we just lost, basically, half of our local government aid, it was $300,000. We're losing about half of that, so we basically, all of us have to make that up. It's, I guess, a trend that's happening. So, again, yes, how do we, how do we make that up besides just taxing more? Now, the city wanted, I think, a 7% levy this year. I was pretty adamant about a cap at five. I do agree with the redevelopment, we do need, I'd, I'd say, smart growth in our town. Again, we've heard the last, what, two, three years that we don't want massive apartment buildings, but maybe open to other things that can develop, create some tax revenue coming in, and go from there.
All right, thank you. Kim Believernick.
Well, I think that we need to support not only the businesses that we have, but the new businesses that come into town. And one of the things that I don't see in Mound is that sense of community support, ribbon-cutting ceremonies, pictures in the paper, you know, promoting those people that are spending their livelihoods to start a new business. And we need to rally our citizens to support those businesses, to support the community. I don't want us to be a drive-through to Watertown. I want us to be Mound-strong. And I think that it's possible, it's going to take some energy, it's going to take some concerns, and I think that we can do it together, if you'll join me.
Thank you. All right, this next question relates to garbage. Mound residents are frustrated with various garbage services from which they are asked to choose. What do you believe would best serve the residents of Mound in terms of garbage service? Michelle Herrick.
So this is an ongoing problem, I have to admit. We've had the same issue. Unfortunately, our past carrier and community member decided to get out of the business, and so we've been forced to seek services from other entities. I'm not really sure that I have a solution at this point, because I really don't know all the details, and I haven't done the analysis. But I know currently there's three or four different garbage companies that are coming in and removing our refuge. So I would say that maybe the city might need to be a little bit proactive, and maybe take a look at these options, and come up with specific criteria, and provide the citizens with some recommendations, and/or only provide permits to certain carriers.
All right, Michael Tesmer.
So part of my job is negotiating for a living. And I think this would need to go to RFP and have people bid, and pit them against each other, and negotiate with them, and make sure that they know they need to deliver the service at a level that's acceptable, or they'll lose the contract. So I mean, when I hear this problem, we need our garbage to be picked up, we all know that, so let's get the carriers fighting for our business.
All right, Jason Holt.
So I got an email from a resident a few months ago, and their comment was, why are they coming so early? And so actually, we ended up changing the hours for what, which they can come. Sorry, in the, in the summer, you're not coming at six in the morning. That's, maybe not answering the question, but that's, you know, a good thing when people email us, we, we listen. I just changed garbage services from whatever we were to this new company, and I think I told my wife, I think we save four, 500 bucks a year. It was crazy. So first of all, make sure you're looking. The other thing is, when I was talking to another guy in his driveway the other day, he said that, whatever day his garbage comes, Monday or whatever, he was like, you have eight different garbage companies coming through there constantly. And he's like, is there anything that we can do that, one day a week, we just, all we hear is garbage come, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. We'll have to look into that.
All right, thank you. Kim Believernick.
Well, I'd like to know what the issues are with their garbage service, because my garbage is picked up, and, and we don't have a problem with my family. So I, what I want to know is, what are the standards of service? And I don't think that the question really gave us any insight as to what the problems were. So I really don't have any further comments on this one until I know really what the issues are.
All right, thank you. Ray Salazar.
Garbage collection, we have an open market. Competition is good for us as customers. Competition is good for business. They compete openly. Anybody in the garbage hauling business can come to City Hall and fill out an application. There, there are no chosen haulers. I pay $30 a month, and I'm using Republic Services. It hasn't gone up in years. I don't know if other folks are paying too much, I'm so sorry to hear that. Check around, price shop, okay? But the thing is, it's an open market, competition. There you go, you can shop for it. There is no exclusivity in Mound.
All right, thank you. Ann, Sherry Pugh.
Well, that's true. We were very happy with our garbage service, except for they went out of business, and they'd been with my family for 50 years, or we had been with them, I guess, for 50 years. But it is an open market, but in that open market, I do have to admit that it means that there are five different garbage trucks that go down my street, because five different companies are servicing the street, and that's wear and tear on the street. But I suspect if the city were to offer to contract specific services, people would feel that their rights were taken away. So I guess it's one for the citizens, if, if you want to give up your free market and have us contract for the best service and minimal trucks. You'd need to vote on that, put it on the ballot.
All right, thank you. This will probably be the next to the last question. Affordable housing, and we'll go first to Michelle Herrick. What measures would you support, if any, to address affordable housing needs for Mound? Michelle Herrick.
So I think that's a nationwide problem. Based on my knowledge for what's going on with the interest rates, and a lot of other factors that impact the selection of your home, the rent that you're willing to pay, those are all things that are out of control for the city, and for myself personally. So I would say that we could possibly look into, I know we already have adequate, we meet the minimum requirements for the federal guidelines and the state guidelines for lower-income housing. So I don't know what we could do to make that more affordable. I would hope that we could continue to find resources, any other grants or anything that might be helpful to sustain that.
All right, Michael Tesmer.
I'm not familiar enough with this topic. I'd love to learn more and participate, but I don't have an opinion.
All right, Sherry Pugh.
Well, I think that, you know, I've door-knocked the city of Mound three times, so I feel like I know everybody's front steps. And there are a lot of front steps that need some help, and there are a lot of houses that need some help. So I think that within our community, we have a lot of people who are living in affordable homes, but they haven't been able to keep up the pace with the maintenance on them. And at some point in time, I would like for us as a city to figure out if there was some way we could help people maintain the, the housing stock. You know, 50% of the houses in this town were built after 1985. So, you know, we've got, we've got a good new stock, but we also have a significant older stock. And if we had programs that could help people fix up their front stoops, put rails on their staircases, maybe help with painting, I think we could benefit the entire community if we could figure out something to help with that.
All right, thank you. Jason Holt.
Again, I think the, the city meets their, you know, basic requirements that we have to. There's not a lot of places around here that you'll find multimillion-dollar houses on the lake, and then very, you know, low-income housing on the other side of it. What I would be concerned about is, say, my daughter or son go off to college, they come back and they say, you know, they want to live by mom and dad. I want to make sure that they have, you know, an apartment, or a condo, or some kind of an attractable option. There isn't none. Now, again, we're not saying we want big apartments in our, in our towns, but what, what options do they have? So they're going to go to Plymouth, or, you know, anywhere else, which is fine. But then the next phase, the next phase, and then retirement. So right now, we just passed Artesa, which is, you know, I think a good option for, for our downtown area, 62-plus, so.
All right, thank you. Ray Salazar.
Affordable housing. If you're talking about rent, there are two things. Affordable housing, Mound has organically affordable housing. We have an aging inventory of rental houses. Hence, they tend to be a little bit less expensive. As far as new housing for rental, we now have a new townhouse project that was built at Island Park, Townhouses of Island Park. They are very posh, they are very high-end. We all did a tour, all of us on the city council, we did a ribbon-cutting ceremony there, as a matter of fact, a few weeks ago. And it's very, very nice, and they're also expensive. As far as owned homes, if you have a problem keeping up with your home, there are block grants that are available, and the city has assisted with that in particular cases.
All right, thank you. Kim Believernick.
Well, 95% of Mound's land is built on. So there isn't a lot of options unless we start converting things to gain more affordable housing. So I don't know what the strategic plan is to address this issue, but certainly, it would be something that I would investigate if I would become mayor.
All right, thank you. This will be your final question, and it'll go first to Jason Holt. Are there any issues, questions, concerns that we've missed tonight in the forum that you feel need to be addressed?
Yeah. We covered water. When I talk to people, that's their main issue. Obviously, we want to, we want to tackle that. That's literally the number one thing I would be working on. That I am working on on council as well. Number two, we, we have talked about growth in, in our town, and, and kind of the growth that we want, the smart type of growth. The third thing, I guess, would be communication. We do have a new website, it's better than the last one. Could be better, but it's, it's, it's better. We need a social media presence, we need to get the word out. Like it or not, people are on social media, that's how they get their news. This room may be more full if we're, if we had that on there. I want to record planning commissions on video. You know, people think, oh, what did we talk about in there? You read the minutes, you, you miss the concept of what we actually talked about.
All right, Kim Believernick.
Well, I'm going to completely agree with Jason. Communication is key. We need to do a better job. We need to get emails from our Mound citizens, and start sending out messages. Messages, updates, communications, on what's happening, how citizens can become involved. We need a marketing plan, we need communication, and we need consistent communication to our citizens.
Thank you. Michelle Herrick.
I'm going to say it again, communication. As a project manager, I often work with large groups of personnel on very, very large projects. And so one of the critical things that we've found, or at least that I've experienced, is that we need a strong communication plan, both to the end client, as well as to, say, the programming group, the IT group. So I think that's a very important thing that we should do, you know, first of all, and try to, you know, it would be a major thing that I would like to work on initially. Some of the other things, as I've mentioned, has been the Economic Development Committee. I think we need to support our local businesses. I'm not really sure of all the options, but I know after speaking with some of them, they don't feel supported. Those are probably the two topics that I would try to hone in on.
All right, thank you. Sherry Pugh.
I would say economic development. One of the things that I sort of observed and we saw is during our two-and-a-half-year COVID lockdown, because we were home, people were shopping, utilizing our businesses. Now, I've always operated that way, where I always try and use the businesses where I live, or use the businesses where I was working, because I did a lot of community work. And I really would like for us to think about having a program like a Buy Mound, that people keep buying in Mound, now that we're back in cars again. Let's not start driving to Costco, to the liquor store, to the wine shop in Minnetaka. Use our liquor store, use our grocery stores, use our hardware stores. And because for every dollar we circulate in our town, we can circulate those dollars seven times. And those local businesses all give philanthropy to our community. And we know that. We know that, that when we need an event, they're always there helping us. So we need to be more strategic in how we spend our dollars.
Thank you. Michael Tesmer.
Yeah, I'd say there's two. So I shared I worked in technology. I think our website's interesting for the city. I just think it, there's a lot of digital things that can happen in the world that we can communicate quicker, communicate ideas, get feedback. I mean, information exchange is immediate, and creating a sense of community digitally is equally as important for our youth as it is to have the physical community presence to really connect with people. The other thing that's been mentioned a couple of times is, like, my desire in, in getting involved is just the economic development in the city. Like, what is our path? What is the best way to generate revenue, not increase taxes, to get more money into the city to help address some of the challenges that we're facing?
Thank you. Ray Salazar.
Well, we've heard a lot about economic development tonight. Did you know how many vacancies we have for retail frontage in our town right now? One. One vacancy. The Commerce Place Shopping Center is fully leased, with a new restaurant that's coming in. One vacancy. That's it. Do you know how many restaurants we have? 14. Places by which to buy readily-prepared food. And with the new restaurant opening up at Commerce Place, it'll be 15. So what do I think that we didn't cover tonight? Public safety. We have a great police force. In 2013, we merged our police force with Orno. They do a fantastic job, they are omnipresent. How can we improve on this? Be like it was when we were kids. If you messed up down the street, your mom knew before you hit, before you hit your doorstep that you made a mistake.
All right, thank you. Gather your thoughts here, and I'll now call on each of you for your closing statement, in order, beginning with Ray Salazar.
Thank you. As you know, I am your existing mayor. I love doing this job. I've served it for four years. We've quite accomplished quite a number of things. We have addressed, or are in the process of addressing, the manganese water problem for our city. I've been on top of that project since the beginning, since I was first made aware by our city manager and our engineers. I have pursued dollars from the federal government. They brought $680 million to the state of Minnesota through the infrastructure plan, through the federal government. I'm working, have worked with our state representatives and our state senator, by which to try to garner money to pay for our financial, or get a financial grant for our water filtration plant. It is $24 million this year. Next year, we're already applying, it's going to go to $26 million. That equates to $8,000 per household. Okay? If we were to bear that entire cost ourselves, we're looking at doubling our water bills. If we were to bear that entire cost ourselves, we're looking at doubling our water bills. That's why I'm working so hard to get that for you. We have a lot of new infrastructure. We have new lift stations. We have 30 lift stations. These aren't really fun things to talk about, but it's part of infrastructure. We've built, redone 24 of them. We have six more to finish. We have a new park that's coming. I worked part of this. Sherry Pugh, as a matter of fact, and I worked on this with our new park. It's a city center park, part of the Harbor District Improvement Plan. We have roughly five acres of land there, and we've sold off two acres to a, a senior co-op. That's part of new redevelopment. And we have a brand-new park that we're working on, and that will be breaking ground next spring, hopefully. And that will have an art walk.
Go ahead. Finish your sentence.
Okay. We will have an art walk and a performance center. And we will also be closing off Auditor's Road, in order to make the park safer, no traffic passing through it, and to make the park even larger. So you'll have probably about five to six acres of park there, which doesn't sound like a lot, but it really is quite a bit. There's far more things. And you know what? You can call me anytime, and I'll tell you more about what I'm doing.
All right. Thank you. Kim Believernick.
Well, I am running for mayor, because I want to see a long-term city strategy put into place, not just talked about, but realized. I'm going to lead the city council to create that long-range plan. We need to fix the manganese problem found in our wells, and until we can secure the funding to fix it, Mound needs to provide safe drinking water to those who can't afford to buy bottled water, or install a household water treatment unit. There are people in our city that can't afford these items, and I want to help support them. We need to rally our citizens, and communicate this to, as a priority, to the state. Congressman Dean Phillips, chief of staff, recommended that as Mound citizens, we rally. We bring attention to this issue at the state capitol, to ensure that we are noticed, and that the bill now passes at $24 million to upgrade our wells. From there, we need pedestrian safety in downtown Mound. We need to, in, put in place the recommendations on the study that we received in 2021. We need to encourage our citizens to, to use the businesses in Mound, to fill the storefronts with consumers, while improving the exterior facades on some of the buildings, so that we have a sense of community, and it reflects the aesthetics that we want in downtown Mound. My long-term vision is a safe city of Mound, with new economic potential, and partnerships with our churches, our schools, our citizens, our businesses. We need to establish a climate of trust, and openness, and mutual respect for all citizens and council members, so that we have a strong sense of community. This is important. I want you to know that I've been, I've been endorsed by one of the current council members who support me.
Thank you. All right. Sherry Pugh.
Well, thank you for being here this evening. I think that we know that we live in a great little town, and that this town has so many opportunities before it. We, there's the middle of the bike trail that goes from Wayzetta to Mare. We have a great farmer's market. Matter of fact, we really have the only real farmer's market on the Lake Cities. And we have parks, and we have walkways. We can make this town our special little haven of joy. But we need to work together. We need to be visionaries about how we move to make our environment safe, clean, and a healthy place for our kids to raise. And also, I'm the chair of Minnesota Age Friendly, and I want to put in a push for an environment where people can age well. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Tesmer.
First off, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting the event tonight. I have a lot to learn. I'm new to politics, new to this town. I'm a quick study in most things. I've really been leaning in. My wife and I talk about, you know, the topics probably too often for her liking. If my answers resonated with you this evening, I'd appreciate your vote on November 8. If you know you're going to vote for me, tell your friends and family. I just moved here. I don't have an extensive network, so I'd appreciate it. My promise to the community is, I will listen. I'll be involved. I'll be prepared. And I'll make things happen. I have a track record of getting things done. I didn't get to my position in my professional career, because I wait for things to happen. I push, I drive. I'm a person that takes no, is, is an obstacle to yes. We need to, we need to solve some of the issues in our town. They're not easy issues to, to address. And as I said earlier, my, my primary focus out of the gate would be really making this council and, in our, in our community, focus on addressing our water issue. Again, I said it earlier, I'll say it again. It's ridiculous that we have third-world water in a first-world country. And we live in the area that the water, we cannot drink it today. Unacceptable. So thanks for your time. I appreciate your vote on the 8th.
All right. Michelle Herrick.
What I would say is, I moved to Mound in 2005. I've been involved in several discussions about the apartment buildings. I know that we have a strong sense of community here. I volunteer at the West Tonka Food Shelf, where I've been fortunate enough to meet a lot of volunteers, as well as patrons. And a lot of these issues that we're discussing tonight have been discussed in front of those people. They ask questions. They're curious. So I have to go back to communication. As a project manager, my goal is to set an effective timeline and meet that goal. So I think we need to work a little stronger, a little harder, on our processes, and how we function as a city, and how we discuss those issues, and how they're handled in front of the city council. I have to agree, I've sat through a lot of meetings, that I think a lot of the discussions could have been done beforehand, and/or could have been communicated better to the public. We initially organized a large group of people from the community, signed petitions to stop the Schaefer-Richardson project, which was going to change our ordinances, whatever the, you know, rules about how we can build, and what we can build within that property. So it was very effective. I'm proud to say that we, I think we had a very strong effect on the outcome. So I know we have a strong sense of community, and I think we should leverage that. We have a lot of bright, intelligent people that are very caring and considerate. And I think getting them involved can be nothing but a plus, and a good lead into our success moving forward.
Thank you. Jason Holt.
So one of the first things that we did on council, when I joined, was plowing the Dakota Trail. That was something that was talked about before I got there. And the first meeting, I said, let's get this done. I want, let's start off strong. Let's plow it in the winter. People want to use it. Sometimes you're at odds with the city on that, and I was. They didn't want to do that. They said, nah, nah, let's, let's keep it how it is. You need strong leadership, whether it's any of us on council, or the mayor. We, we put our foot down, I've put my foot down, on the Williams store. They keep asking for extensions after extensions after extensions. I said, no, we're not doing extensions anymore. Your building is not inhabitable. It basically should be condemned. We need to move on. We, someone needs to start saying, let's, let's change this topic, and we need to kind of start moving forward. Going door-to-door the other day, some of the things that I heard from residents, nothing ever changes in this town. We want growth. Things never change in this town, and we keep, keep electing the same people. We don't feel heard. It's time for a change. You, you guys are electing us. We're here for you. I don't aspire to be some major politician, or a mayor, or elected official. I want to get back to our community. I love doing this. If you elect me, you won't regret it. And you'll always have my phone number, and I appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Before concluding the Mound Mayor and City Council Candidate Forum, I want to express our thanks to those who have made this forum possible. First, on behalf of the League of Women Voters, I want to thank the candidates for being part of the democratic process by running for office, and for being willing to serve the community. Audience, please join me in thanking the candidates with your applause.[1712.01][1712.01][applause] Thank you also to the League of Women Voters volunteers, our audience here, and those viewing this event virtually, for your participation in this forum. Thank you to the city of Mound, and West Tonka School District staff for supporting this event, and the Lake Minnetaka Cable Commission for broadcasting live, live streaming, and recording tonight's forum. On-demand viewing can be accessed at lvwpa.org. For additional election information, we encourage you to visit vot411.org, the League of Women Voters award-winning one-stop shop, where voters can register to vote, find their polling place, and learn how candidates stand on the issues. Please remember to vote in the November 8 election, by absentee ballot or in person. Your vote is your voice. League of Women Voters welcomes new members, both women and men, at lvwpa.org. Thank you, and good night.[1775.65][1775.65][applause]